Yeah, here.
Uh. I used to.
Definitely.
I'll come down here.
Attention, everyone. Call to order. All rise.
Thank you. Please be seated. Well, welcome to the second meeting of City Council for the 2024 year. I know one of those, I think, was in 2023, so don't get confused. We actually start our council meetings in December. And I'd like to start with a land acknowledgement. We acknowledge that we are gathered today on the traditional lands of the Anishnaabik, Haudenosaunee, Leni-Pewak, and Atawandron peoples. We honor and respect the history, languages, languages and cultures of the diverse Indigenous people who call this territory home. We acknowledge all of the treaties that are specific to this area: the two-row Wampanoag Treaty of the Haudenosaunee Confederacy Silver Covenant Chain, the beaver hunting grounds of the Haudenosaunee Nanfan Treaty of 1701, the McKee Treaty of 1790, the London Township Treaty of 1796, the Huron Track Treaty of 1827 with the Anishnaabik, and the Dish with One Spoon Covenant Wampanoag of the Anishnaabik and Haudenosaunee. The three Indigenous nations that are neighbors to London are the Chipwas of the Thames First Nation, Oneida Nation of the Thames, and the Munsee Delaware Nation, who all continue to live as sovereign nations with individual and unique languages, cultures, and customs. The City of London is also committed to making every effort to providing alternate formats and communication supports for meetings upon request. To make a request specific to this meeting, please contact councilagenda@london.ca or 519-661-2489, extension 2425. It's now my pleasure to introduce our performer for the National Anthem. Born in London, Ontario, cellist Marianna Grigg made her solo debut at age 16 with the London Community Orchestra. She was then selected as a member of the prestigious National Youth Orchestra of Canada. Marianna has appeared as a principal cellist with the London Youth Symphony, Symphony, the Western Symphony Orchestra, the London Community Orchestra, and many more. Well with NYC, she performed in many venues across Canada and internationally. Marianna recently performed at the Queen's Ball of Brigerton Experience in Toronto. Marianna graduated with an undergraduate degree in music performance from Western University. She completed a master's degree at McGill University's Shulik School of Music. This season, she can be heard at the Grand Theatre and London's Candlelight Concerts. Marianna and the Vintra, sorry, string or quartet, will also take the stage during the UNESCO City of Music Meetings taking place at the end of February that will bring cities of music from around the world to London. Please join me in welcoming Marianna, who will now perform the National Anthem for us, and please rise for that. I'll now look to colleagues for disclosures of pecuniary interest for this meeting. Okay. Seeing none, today is a pretty special day from a recognition standpoint. We get to recognize the 2024 Mayor's New Year's Honors List, so if you'll give me a moment, I'll make my way to the podium for today's presentation. Okay, thank you. And for those of us, I'll just let you know, we had a nice reception with both the award recipients today as well as members of their families. And I just wanted to start before I get into this. We'll have many an opportunity over the next little bit to recognize and thank the many people who've made many wonderful contributions to our city. But there are many people in the audience today who enable them and support them and allow them to do the amazing things that they get to do. So as you're here to celebrate, people on the floor, we'll make sure we kind of look in the right direction for photos and everything. I just wanted to say thank you to each of you for supporting amazing people in our city doing and allowing them to do the things that they're doing. You'll hear some amazing accomplishments today, but I recognize as someone who serves in public office that I can only do so. And many people can only do the things that they they are passionate about when they have the support of loved ones, families, and friends. So thank you for everything you've done as we celebrate some of your loved ones today. I just wanted to share my thoughts on that with you. The Mayor's New Year's Honors List is an annual recognition of persons who have contributed in an outstanding manner to the community of London in one of the following categories: accessibility, age-friendly, arts, distinguished Londoner, diversity and race relations, environment, heritage, housing, humanitarianism, safety and crime prevention, and sports. And it's now my honor to introduce the 2024 Mayor's New Year's Honors List recipients and share just a little bit about each of them with all of you. And as I introduce you, you can kind of make your way out while I'm giving a little bit of a description. So when you hear your name, feel free to to come out just to the center here and and yeah, that's logistics is very important. So you can come out when I say your name and I'll do the description. So under the category of accessibility, Jennifer Williams. Jennifer, sure. They're clapping for you already, and I haven't even said the amazing things you've done. Jennifer Williams, who is the Director of Volunteers for the London Airshow, tries to make an environment that is inclusive to persons of all abilities. Jennifer always finds ways to make everyone feel included, even volunteers in wheelchairs who feel who feel valued and appreciated in the help that they are able to provide due to Jennifer's wonderful leadership. Jennifer always makes sure the volunteers have everything they need to be involved, and she is always very accommodating to all the volunteers and will even move volunteers to a more accessible and safe area for their own enjoyment and ability. She also includes individuals from many different diverse communities who are who are all free from discrimination, disability, sex, race, age. For for these reasons and many more, Jennifer Williams is named to the 2024 Mayor's New Year's Honors List in the category of accessibility. As you notice, I'm the one who screws everything up and makes it not smooth. Jennifer did amazing. Age-friendly, Don Pollack. Come forward, Don. Don has. Don has volunteered the past several years with the with the local London CARP branch in the capacity as president. This active London chapter provides a wide variety of informative educational speakers for each chapter meeting and provides valuable takeaway information for many seniors living in the London area. With Don's dedication and contributions to the organization, there has been an increase in attendance with every monthly meeting. His assistance is key in putting together the popular meeting agendas and speakers. We should hire you for council. And his efforts as president for the local London CARP branch and more, Don is named the 2024 Mayor's New Year's Honors List in the category of age-friendly. In the category of the arts, Audrey Cooper. After growing up in Toronto, where she started her own family in the 1950s and 60s, Audrey faced retirement and moved from Toronto to London to be closer to family. Health-wise, she was also dealing with another challenge: depression. In true Audrey fashion, after seeking conventional mental health treatments, she plotted her own therapy. At age 76 of age, Audrey picked up a paintbrush and started to paint. She started to enjoy she started to enjoy sales of her newfound talents and was enjoying the camaraderie of the kind spirits in her new home when, one day, looking at an empty space in London's downtown Talbot Centre, she decided it was the perfect venue to showcase the works of the city's talented creative community. "Its purpose was clear to me," she says, "and so a dream was born." Dozens and dozens of local artists' work has adorned the gallery's walls over the past 10 years, and countless other creatives have been inspired by her talents as an artist, encouraged by her endeavors and contributions to the London art scene, or simply come under the spell of the Audrey story. For all of these reasons and many more, Audrey Cooper is named to the 2024 Mayor's New Year's Honors List in the category of the arts. In the distinguished Londoner category, we'll start with Bill Brady. Come on it, Bill. Bill is a print and radio journalist manager and executive who's been involved with various local and national organizations. He is regarded as a pioneer of the television call-in show in Canada. Bill's daily radio program was on the air in southwestern Ontario region for more than 20 years. A radio personality and general manager for CFPL Radio in London, Brady was also the president of the operations for the Blackburn Radio Company and senior vice president at the Blackburn, parent Blackburn Group Company. Brady has served as president of the Central Canadian Broadcasters Association, and in 1996, he was inducted into the Canadian Broadcast Hall of Fame. For all of these reasons and many more, and you've served on many, many other boards and many capacities since then, Bill Brady, you are named distinguished Londoner for the 2024 Mayor's New Year's Honors List. Next, I'll welcome out Brian Harris. Brian Harris is a member of the Royal Canadian Legion. Brian Harris is a member of the Royal Canadian Legion Victory Branch in London and has been since 2006. In 2007, Brian joined the Executive as the Sergeant-at-Arms, Public Relations Chair, and Operations Chair. In 2009, he was elected President and served a two-year term. He has held almost every position on the Victory Executive through 2022. During those years, he held multiple positions at zone and district levels at the Legion, including commander. In 2019, he was elected Vice President Ontario Command and served one three-year term. Also in 2019, he was appointed Provincial Poppy Chair, a position he continues to hold. In 2017, he began an initiative to permanently house homeless veterans in London, a position he continues to chair today. 2011, he began to support two youth groups, Number Nine Royal Canadian Army Cadets and the London Legion Track and Field Alliance, both positions he continues today. For his nearly two decades of service to the Royal Canadian Legion and our veterans in multiple capacities, and his encouragement and development of youth activities, Brian Harris is named a distinguished Londoner for the 2024 Mayor's New Year's Honors List. Evelyn. Evelyn Shurkoff. Evelyn Shurkoff has been a longtime volunteer tour guide with Museum London. She began her volunteer role in 1970. She has contributed to the education of thousands of students in the region regarding the arts and art history in London. She continues to tour at the museum, where for 53 years, she has generously shared her knowledge and experience with students of all ages. She has shared her experience and passion for the arts to inspire youth to think critically about art and to find wonder within it. Evelyn has also supported artists in their work, contributing to a thriving art community in London, and has enjoyed all of residency has to offer here. She has also given back with generous donations of artwork to the museum to complement the many pieces within a collection she has used to educate and inspire countless youth in London. For these reasons and more, Evelyn is named a distinguished Londoner for the 2024 Mayor's New Year's Honors List. Next, we'll invite Sheila Hogarth to come out. Come on out. Sheila is a Northwest London resident who has been actively collecting litter throughout the city for the last 12 years. Surgery to help her epilepsy allowed her to be more independent, and motorized wheelchairs have allowed her to be mobile. She has been giving back to the community and encouraging others to do their part as well. Her contributions not only beautify the city, but also help protect wildlife, plant life, waterways, soil, and ecosystems from toxic and dangerous chemicals and materials that they shouldn't be introduced to. For her contributions to the London community and her time giving back, and for those who live in Northwest London, I see you all the time out picking up litter and helping the community each and every day. I swear you're out there more than anybody else in the entire Northwest, and I would think councillor Raman would say the same. For all of those amazing efforts that you've done, Sheila, you're named as a distinguished Londoner for the 2024 Mayor's New Year's Honors List. Next, we'll have representatives from the Youth Coalition Combating Islamophobia in the distinguished Londoner category. The Youth Coalition Combating Islamophobia is a passionate collective of Muslim youth and their adult mentors, dedicated to raising awareness, advocating for change, and combating Islamophobia. Through workshops, events, and educational resources, YCCI strives to empower individuals and communities to stand against prejudice and discrimination. For all of their efforts and contributions in bringing people positive change, YCCI is named to the 2024 Mayor's New Year's Honors List in the category of distinguished Londoner. And I just want to add, although the group is represented by a number of, oh, come on out, come on out. The group is represented by a number of individuals today. It is a large group, and not everybody was able to come, so we have a little bit of certificates for everybody, and I'll present those all to you. But we'll do one group photo perhaps first. Next, I'll welcome out Ramina Morris. It's probably fun to get to stand here and not have to answer questions from council. Ramina Morris became the City of London's first Director of Anti-Racism and Anti-Oppression in 2021, and was responsible for building and staffing this newly formed division. In the aftermath of the attack on our London family, Ramina was instrumental in the design and implementation of the city's plan to disrupt and dismantle Islamophobia. This effort won accolades and admiration across Canada and was hailed as a model for other cities to follow. Through Ramina's leadership, the ARAO Division provides guidance, tools, and supports in training for employees to take proactive steps in addressing systemic racism and oppression within the workplace and within the community. In addition to targeting racism and oppression directed towards Black people, Indigenous people, Asian people, and all people of color, Division focuses on ableism, xenophobia, sexism, homophobia, transphobia, and other equity-seeking groups as necessary. Following, for all these reasons and many more, Ramina Morris is named to the 2024 Mayor's New Year's Honors List in the category of diversity and race relations. Diane Zoller. Come on out. Diane has been involved in many community volunteers' activity locally to support environmental action. She organized many public workshops, i.e. renewables, conservation, energy efficiency, composting, and recycling. Diane also developed a community-wide energy plan response campaign for London through neighborhood forums, roundtables, local election surveys, and more, resulting in municipal plan support. She participated in the city's Urban Agricultural Strategy Committee as ACE rep. She was a member of the city's Community Engagement Task Force tasked with municipal engagement policy, city cycling advisory committee input into cycling master plan, and various other development projects. London Middlesex Road Safety Strategy Team tasked with the implementation to reduce traffic accidents. And for all of these contributions and many more over the past years, and your dedication for bettering the environment, Diane, you are named to the 2024 Mayor's New Year's Honors List in the category of environment. Thank you. In the heritage category, Jason Hick. Jason Hick is the Communications Coordinator for the Architectural Conservancy Ontario-London Region Branch. He has changed the profile of heritage issues in the locality, sorry, that's awkward wording, in locality through reaching out to the community in a very effective and informative way. Through social media, Jason has engaged with a larger group of interested people. It keeps everyone involved with local, provincial, and even countrywide heritage issues and events. His technical knowledge has been invaluable. Jason has also contributed significantly to the Heritage House Sign Initiative, which has done so much to illuminate our neighborhoods and highlighted the heritage awareness and profile across the city. For this and many other reasons, Jason Hick is named to the 2024 Mayor's New Year's Honors List in the category of heritage. Congratulations. In humanitarianism category, Jenna Rose Sands. Jenna Rose Sands is a Cree Anishnaabe artist and writer in London. She has created the atrocities against Indigenous Canadians for Dummies, a zine which explores hard-to-read about and surely harder-to-write about topics such as the residential school system, missing and murdered Indigenous women and girls, and the 60s scoop. She's also created a website of resources to support her writings. More recently, she is the Executive Director of Safe Space. She has been a fierce advocate for London's health and homelessness whole-of-community system response, has advocated for unhoused Londoners who are being harassed and targeted on the streets, and has secured additional funding from the city for greater supports like increased access to beds and showers for London's rising unhoused population. For these reasons and many more, Jenna Rose Sands is named to the 2024 Mayor's New Year's Honors List in the category of humanitarianism. Jamie Walls, in the category of safety and crime prevention. Jamie has been a member of the London Search and Rescue team since 2005. Jamie has been a searcher for the team and is on-call 24/7/365. He has taken on a role as an instructor on the team and has taught numerous classes for new recruits. Jamie is a team lead who oversees and searches while operational. Jamie took additional training to further his knowledge in search and rescue, advanced search and rescue, and search manager training. Jamie served on the senior leadership team as deputy commander of the LSTAR team up until October 2020. In October 2020, he was elected commander of the team. His main task was to oversee the transition of the LSTAR team from a division under St. John Ambulance to their own independent organization. When LSTAR left St. John Ambulance, Jamie led the team through the transition to be a not-for-profit organization and eventually a registered charity. Under his guidance as commander of LSTAR between 2020 and 2023, the team increased in size from 60 members to 108 members. The team enhanced their digital capabilities under his direction. The fundraising capabilities of the team helped expand their equipment. His foresight into the technological and digital needs of the team will assist LSTAR for years to come. For these reasons and many more, Jamie Walls is named to the 2024 Mayor's New Year's Honors List in the category of safety and crime prevention. Congratulations. In the sports category, Vito Fridja. And he's not able to join us today, but his family members are here. Vito joined the national, this is the category of sports I should mention, Vito joined the National Basketball League of Canada in 2011 when seven teams began to play. The London Lightning were born, and as a result, brought professional basketball to London. As owner of the team, he brought six championships to London in 11 years and allowed many Londoners to enjoy and cheer on a hometown team. Thousands of London basketball fans attended, along with thousands of elementary-school-aged children, because Vito would give thousands of free tickets to the schools to give children the opportunity to see this sport. Vito is not only generous with schoolchildren, but he also donates his gym facilities to organizations that need a place to practice or hold an event. The Boys and Girls Club of Canada, the YMCA, and Kids Sport London have all taken advantage of Vito's generosity and willingness to help the community encourage kids to play sports as well. Vito has also contributed financially to London's athletes' performance on the world stage. Vito has generously donated to expensive costs of training Olympians. Because of his love of sports, because of his leadership abilities, and his willingness to help children develop and play sports, Vito is named to the 2024 Mayor's New Year's Honors List in the category of sports. Congratulations. Let me just conclude by once again thanking everybody who contributed to the nominations process this year. I know each and every year, we reach out to seek worthy Londoners, worthy of distinction. We rely on those who want to forward names to members of council, those who work on our community advisory committees, and many others who ensure that we get phenomenal contributions in our community recognized here before council. I know that there are many, many, many other people in this city doing amazing things, and we can think of today as an example of recognizing just a few individuals who are contributing to our community in such a significant way. Again, thank you to all of the family members and loved ones who support everything they do, and we look forward to, if you want to stay for the rest of the council meeting, you're welcome to, but we know that maybe you have some plans with those who came here to support, and really appreciate your time today, and thank you for all that you do for our city as well. Okay, everyone, that concludes recognitions. Item three is review of confidential matters to be considered in public. We have none, which means we're on to council in closed session, for which we have eight items listed on the agenda. I'll look for a motion to move into closed session, moved by councillor Cuddy, seconded by councillor Raman. We will open that for voting momentarily.
Closing the vote, motion carries 15 to 0.
Thanks. We'll be moving to committee room five for closed session. So everybody else, you don't have to leave because we're moving. You're welcome to stay, but we'll be in closed session for a little bit.
Thank you, please be seated. Okay, that concludes the in-camera portion of our meeting, but I'll go to Counsel Frank for a declaration.
Thank you, yes, I just want to declare a conflict of, or I declared a conflict of interest during closed session on items 4.6 and 4.7.
Thank you. We're now on to communications and petitions. There are eight, if you include the added agenda. Oh, sorry, confirmation of signing up the minutes of previous meetings, the first meeting, which was held December 19th, 2023, look for a mover of those minutes. Counsel McAllister, seconded by Counsel Cuddy, any discussion on the minutes? Seeing none, we'll open those for voting.
Closing the vote, motion carries, 15 to zero.
Okay, now we're on to communications and petitions, and there are eight, if you include the added agenda. 6.1, we have to deal with separately and at this time, the other ones, after we're done with 6.1, we can refer to the various components of the agenda. So 6.1 is the Ombudsman Report, Investigation into, a complaint about a gathering held by members of the Community Protective Services Committee. The report is attached to the agenda, and by legislation, we're required to take an action with respect to this report. So I'm prepared to bring a motion before council related to this report, but to do so, I'll turn the chair over to the Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, your worship, I will take the chair, and I will recognize Mayor Morgan.
So in response to the report, I'm willing to put the following motion on the floor, and then I'll provide some commentary on it. That the following actions be taken with respect to the Ontario Ombudsman's report regarding a complaint in a gathering held by members of the Community Protective Services Committee of the City of London on March 21st, 2023. A, the report of the Ontario Ombudsman dated January 24th be received. B, the municipal council be reminded that they shall diligently comply with their obligations under the Municipal Act 2001, including a review of applicable open meeting rules. And C, city clerk be directed to provide a reminder to all elected officials related to quorum and relevant open, and the relevant open meeting provisions of the Municipal Act 2001.
Okay, so that's been moved by Mayor Morgan, do we have a second or for that? Seconded by Counsel Pelosi. Mayor Morgan, go ahead with your rationale for your motion.
Yes, so I will, I will let you know, colleagues, I am a little bit frustrated by the recommendations that the, that the Ombudsman has made, because I find them vague, and I also find them difficult to action, and in some sense, even alluding to that the onus is on city staff to ensure that we ourselves as individuals follow all the appropriate rules. So given the vagueness of the recommendations, I brought forward a number of actions that I feel we could take, which really does just remind councillors of the onus, the individual onus that each of us have, to comply with the obligations of the various acts, and provide the opportunities for a reminder about both the quorum and open meeting provisions. Given the vagueness of the recommendations, I'm unsure that there's anything additional that we could actually contemplate proceeding with at this time. And again, I find myself relatively frustrated with the fact that a comprehensive report is written, and the recommendations really don't say much, and in some cases, almost allude to putting the onus on city staff for members of this council to follow the rules. So I know members of council have commented in the media, I think they've taken their own individual actions, I think that those are appropriate steps to take, and I think that this, this motion fulfills our obligation to dispense with the item under the legislation, given the recommendations that were made. It's very difficult to respond in any other way, given the vagueness of the recommendations. So I have this on the floor.
Any other speakers? Counsel Pelosi.
Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer. As Chair of the Community Protective Services Committee, when this offence took place, I had also reached out after this report, for the final public one, to the Ombudsman Office, realizing that I too was frustrated, that I believe a lot of this was already covered in our council training, and our clerks have been diligent in providing their services to help track attendance at events and meetings, should we have any concerns? I'd also raised the concerns with them that the report said quorum a committee, but didn't name any names in it, thereby potentially implying that it could have been all members of committee, which members of committee. So just for the public record, this report does not pertain to the mayor, the chair, or the vice chair of this committee. I realize that there's not much actionable items in this. I questioned the Ombudsman Office, and they said if we wrote them, they really went right back anyways, if we were asking for anything else in the report, and they said we're always welcome to find integrity commissioners as a route going forward if we wanted, but they don't name names in open reports, they don't amend reports, and that the obligations of municipality. So this would dispose of it and meet their criteria, as we do need to take some action with it tonight, and this would satisfy that. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Pelosi. Counsel Ferreira.
Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer. I also contacted the Ombudsman as well, and I had a conversation, frank conversation, with the Ombudsman, or the writer of the report, I should say, with respect to the generalness of the word committee in the title and in within the first couple of paragraphs, because as Counsel Pelosi has already spoke to, it didn't get as detailed and specific as I'd like it to have been. I pointed out to the Ombudsman, it was only till line 11 in the report, that they spoke to three members of the committee rather than the committee as a whole, and I was just pointing out, and I understand, you know, with respect to not having names on the report, but I did want the Ombudsman to know that it wasn't as detailed as it could have been, and any kind of reader going through the report, you know, the general reader might not make it all the way to line 11, and they might take, the whole committee was in breach of, of the open meeting rules. So I do, I did also mention to the Ombudsman that I followed the three recommendations, but I still felt a little captured within the language. But I do appreciate the mayor bringing this to us, and I do know that moving forward, you know, I, we, we will not be doing that. So I'd like to look forward, I'd like to work together, and just, you know, be respectful of the open meeting rules and, and quorum.
Thank you, Counsel Ferreira. Any other speakers to this item? Counsel Tressow.
Just a very brief question. Could, could someone from Civic Administration just confirm that this work is come, is not billed to the city, we don't have any financial liability for the report or the investigation? That's my understanding, is that, is that correct?
And I will direct that to our city clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer. There is no fee or charge to, back to the Corporation of the City of London for the Ombudsman's work.
Thank you for that, Mr. Scholthus. Any other speakers to this motion? Counsel Stevenson.
Thank you, I just wanted to say that I accept this report, it was done professionally, and there were lessons learned.
Thank you. Counsel Stevenson, are there any other speakers to this item? Seeing none, then I'm going to ask the clerk to open the vote on this.
Closing the vote, motion carries, 15 to zero.
Thank you, and I will return the chair to Mayor Morgan.
Okay, thank you, that's Spencer's with 6.1, 6.2 through 6.8, there can be a general motion to refer those items to the various components of the agenda, Counsel Pelosi, seconded by Deputy Mayor Lewis. Any discussion on referring all of those to the relevant points of the agenda? Okay, we'll open that for voting.
Closing the vote, motion carries, 15 to zero.
Okay, there are no motions to which notice was given, we're on to reports. The first report is 8.1, the second report of the Corporate Services Committee. I will turn it over to Chair McAllister to present that particular report.
Thank you, and through your worship, happy to present the second report of the Corporate Services Committee. I have had a request to have item 14 pulled. The earlier items all dealt with the BIA budgets, and I just want to thank the BIAs for coming, for presenting their budgets, and being available to answer any questions. The other items dealt with City Hall in terms of property maintenance that needs to be done, and I have had no other requests in terms of pulling, but I will make a note that it was, sorry, just scroll down. Excuse me. Sorry, just scrolling down. Item 13, which was the application for the issuance of the Proclamation of World Thinking Day, the clerk did reach out to ensure that there was a local connection, and provided me wording in terms of what to put forward, that based on the application dated December 5th, 2023, from Girl Guides Canada, February 22nd, 2024, be proclaimed World Thinking Day, as it does have a local connection, and that was provided.
So Counsel, if, 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 if you're saying that the communication might change the committee's position on this, then I would suggest pulling 13, because the committee direction would require us to, to make a slightly different direction, because it was referred to this meeting. So, so we'll pull it, and then you can make an alternate motion, because it was referred here to deal with. So, so so far, that means 13 and 14 dealt with separately. Does anybody want any of the other pieces, the Corporate Services agenda dealt with separately, aside from the last two items?
Okay.
Okay, seeing none, then you can move a motion for the remainder.
Okay, I'd like to put forward a motion for items 1 through 12.
Okay, that's moved by the chair, any discussion on items 1 through 12? No? Okay, seeing none, we can open that for voting.
This is really awkward to do.
Closing the vote, motion carries, 15 to zero.
Okay, I'll go back to you. Now, Chair, you should present the committee's item 13, 4.1, and if you have a member of the committee who would like to provide the alternate direction, I would suggest that, since you're presenting the referral piece, that a member of the committee could stand up and make an alternate direction, as it's been referred here. So I'll let you present item, item 13, and you'll have that on the floor, but we need a, we need a direction since it was referred here. So perhaps you can look to a member of your committee to either dispense with this in one way or another, by either denying it or, or approving it.
Okay, thank you, I will put item 13 on the floor. This was the application of the issuance of Proclamation for World Thinking Day, which was provided by Girl Guides Canada. In what was presented to committee, they didn't have a London connection, so we asked the clerk to reach out in terms of getting that local connection, we have since received that, and yeah, I'll look to another committee member to provide direction on that.
Or any member of council, Counsel Ramon.
Thank you, I'll move a motion to approve it. Sorry, forgot, yes, thank you, I'll move a motion to approve it, thanks.
Okay, and I'll look for a second or, because that's slightly different, Counsel Cuddy, okay, moved and seconded to approve this proclamation now, any discussion on that? Okay, seeing none, we'll open that for voting.
Closing the vote, motion carries, 15 to zero.
Okay, back to you, Chair.
Thank you, we are on to item 14. I will note that unfortunately, Counsel Cuddy was not present, so the vote on this was a 3-1 vote. I did have a request to have this pulled, so yeah, I will put that on the floor. The committee recommendation was to accept, but take no action.
Okay, so that's on the floor by the committee chair, I'll look for a discussion by colleagues. Go ahead, Counsel Stevenson.
Thank you, I will not be supporting this motion to take no action. When the complaints came in, I relied on our complaint protocol. When it was not followed, I relied on council. At council, it was suggested that I pursue procedural fairness in another forum, so here I am. Counselors are entitled to procedural fairness and the reasonable expectation that our code of conduct will be followed in a way that provides protection and accountability to both the public and to the counselor whose conduct is in question. Therefore, I am seeking indemnification for a judicial review, per our indemnification policy. My intention would be to retain John Mascheran of Aired Burles, he is an established municipal lawyer who also serves as an integrity commissioner for 50 municipalities across Ontario. His reputation is rock solid, and the fact that he would take up this case should speak volumes. At committee, it was recommended that I first pursue a review by the Ombudsman before seeking judicial review, suggesting that is the proper timing, or because a judicial review would be more expensive. First, the professional advice I have received is that judicial reviews have a time limit of 30 days after the initial action, with very few exceptions. Therefore, a judicial review would need to commence almost immediately. There has been precedent set that clearly establishes judicial review as the most appropriate next step. So while it may be the opinion of some counselors that the Ombudsman is more appropriate, it is not the opinion of the professional advice I have sought. Second, the city manager made very clear at committee that the integrity commissioner is contracted directly by council, so the integrity commissioner is not a typical contractor with the City of London, who we can rely on staff to manage and oversee. It is our direct duty as counselors to consider their rulings, but also hold them accountable if and when they make a mistake. I have provided every single necessary piece of advice to this council that demonstrates beyond a shadow of a doubt that the integrity commissioner did not follow the city council's code of conduct complaint protocol. The precedent has been very clearly established, that council alone sets its code of conduct and complaint protocol, the integrity commissioner does not get to invent protocol as they see fit. Third, I stated at committee that the estimated total cost to taxpayers of the judicial review could be approximately 20,000. That is a very loose estimate, that does not just include the cost of a lawyer, or my lawyer, but the entire judicial review process. Please do not misunderstand that 20,000 as the amount I am seeking to pay a lawyer, that is the estimated cost of the entire proceeding, aside from the costs already incurred by taxpayers for the integrity commissioner's investigation. All of this could have been a All of this could have been avoided had it been dealt with at counsel. Obviously not the cost of the investigation.
One, hold on. Go ahead, point of order.
Respectfully, it was dealt with at counsel, just the counselor doesn't like the outcome of it. So I'm challenging the wording used, that it was dealt with at counsel.
Yes, I concur. The integrity commissioner's report was dealt with and dispensed by counsel as per our obligations. And so it's just a wording piece that you're using. If you could just retract that piece and then continue on with your remarks.
Well, I'd like to clarify. The part that wasn't dealt with at counsel was the protocol not being followed. So it was the issue of procedural fairness, not the report that wasn't dealt with. But the issue of procedural fairness twice was referred to as to what the avenues were to pursue that, rather than it be done at counsel.
Okay, appreciate the clarification. Continue on with your remarks.
The integrity commissioner is a direct contractor of this counsel, so we cannot turn a blind eye to the cost incurred of their investigations and all of a sudden care about costs when a counselor chooses to defend themselves when a clear error is made. When it comes to the investigation of social media posts by the integrity commissioner, if we are going to pay for the investigation, then we must also commit to supporting indemnification for a counselor to defend themselves, especially when an error as clear as this is made. The travesty to taxpayers here is not this potential cost of indemnification, but rather the cost of the integrity commissioner's investigation that clearly did not follow our proper protocol. Counsel voted nine to six to accept the integrity commissioner's recommendation to reprimand me. But of the nine who voted to reprimand me, at least two stated that they agreed that there were potential flaws in the process and that I should and could seek appropriate recourse. So here I am. My final ask is this. If you were one of the six counselors who voted not to reprimand me, or if you were one of the nine members who voted to reprimand me but acknowledged the potential flaws in this process, then please allow me to seek procedural fairness through a judicial review and make my case to an appropriate body.
Okay, thank you Counselor. So the motion before us is the committee's recommendation. The counselor was speaking against that to seek an alternative direction, but the committee's recommendation would have to be defeated before that could happen. So I'll look to other speakers on the committee's recommendation. Okay, seeing none, then we'll open the committee's recommendation for voting.
Closing the vote, motion carries twelve to three.
Okay, Counselor McAllister, I think that concludes your report.
Yes, that concludes the second report of the Corporate Services Committee.
Thank you. On to the second report of the Community Protective Services Committee, item eight point two. I'll turn it to Chair Pelosi.
Thank you, your worship. I've been given no advance notice to pull anything or to be voted on separate. It was all unanimous votes of committee.
Okay, Counselor Pelosi is willing to put the whole thing on the floor. Does anybody want anything dealt with separately at this particular committee? Okay.
Thank you. So this was the second report of the Community Protective Services Committee. I'll put all items one through six on the floor. Recognizing that we had a delegation for the Byron Legion Monument donation to Springbank Park, this was to move forward in principle with a report coming back as we move forward. And the delegation, we welcomed Mr. Mance and former Mayor Holder with us. And we also had guests in the gallery. The gallery was almost full. For item four point two, this was municipal options to limit or prevent rent evictions. And some of those same guests are with us again this evening. Realizing if we move forward this, a staff report will come back in the future doing a municipal scan of other jurisdictions and what could be potentially options for enforcement.
Okay, any speakers on the entire, or any items on the committee's report? I'll go to Counselor Cuddy first, and then Deputy Mayor Lewis next.
Thank you, your worship, and through you. A few weeks ago, a parishioner at St. Peter's Cathedral, who I volunteer with, said to me, you know, Peter, I watch you on counsel, but you never smile. And you've got such a nice smile. And then last week, she added insult to this, and she said, and you sometimes look angry. So I said to her, Noreen, watch this Tuesday because, your worship, a lot of, many times we do things around this horseshoe that doesn't have a quantifiable or a, doesn't have a quantifiable effect immediately. But what we're doing today does, and we will see it immediately. And I thank those in the gallery for coming today. Nope, please don't. But I want to say, your worship, that I am so grateful. And I'm going to name off a few people, if you don't mind, I'll be brief. I'm grateful to my colleague to my right, Deputy Mayor Lewis, who has been with me from the very beginning on this, early November, when we started this process. And I went to his office one day and I said, I'm frustrated, I don't know what to do. He suggested that I speak to Mr. Kurtolik, who is the second person I want to thank. And if, Mr. Kurtolik, if you're listening today, thank you for the fine work you did. And I remember calling him and I said, I'm really not sure to do this. And he said, Counselor Cuddy, leave it with me. I know what you need, and I know what you want, and I'll get this done. Your worship, you're the third person I'd like to thank on this. Thank you very much. You came to me at a council meeting and said, can I add my name to this? I said, absolutely, thank you. I do appreciate, I appreciate your efforts. I want to thank the budget chief, Counselor Pelosi, for unanimously bringing this to, getting unanimous support for this. Thank you so much, Counselor Pelosi. And last, I would like to thank Assistant Minister of Housing, Rob Flack, for the work he did. I remember going to the deputy mayor saying, can we contact Minister Rob Flack about this? And he said, absolutely, let him know what we're doing. And Assistant Minister Flack and Minister Paul Calandra worked with us on this. And I am deeply grateful to the work that our minister has performed on. So Deputy Minister, Assistant Minister Flack, thank you so much for the work you've done with this. Your worship, this is, if we don't have anything this year that is monumental, this is it. This will make changes, and I am so grateful that we have, as a council, we're going to come together and we're going to make this happen. And in closing, I'll say that Hamilton has done the same, and other cities will follow us. This is not a perfect motion, it won't be perfect legislation, but it's pretty close. So thank you, sir, and thank you to council for supporting this.
Okay, I have a speaker's list. I have Deputy Mayor Lewis, and then Counselor Trosaw.
Thank you, your worship. So I'm actually going to start with some brief comments on item four, which is the Byron Legion Monument donation. And I want to take the opportunity as well to thank Counselor Van Meerebergen and Counselor Hopkins. And Counselor Hopkins in particular has spent a lot of time with me on this one to move this forward. I know we saw his honorable former worshipfulness in the media last week talking about this as well with members of the Legion, and this has been a long, long time coming. This has been in the works since before Counselor Hopkins joined council, as I believe. So, and I know the counselor's in her third term, so that tells you we've been working on this for a while. Excited to have some of the same folks who were involved in helping with the Holy Roller Restoration stick their hand up and say, hey, maybe we can help with this too. That's great news because that project was just finished, so looking forward to that. Noticing that, but we do have to approve that today so that they can start their fundraising efforts to get that monument to our veterans moving for Springbank Park. And then eventually, from a public safety perspective, this will be good as well because it will allow the road closures that happen on Remembrance Day to shift that ceremony into the park instead of on our public roadways. And that will be a benefit from a public safety perspective in the long run. I've used one minute on that, so I'm going to jump right into the next item, which is the rent evictions motions. I'm going to say I'm going to be perhaps a little less enthusiastic than Counselor Cuddy, only in that I think we've got a lot of work to do still. But I do genuinely believe if we focus on what's before us today, this calendar year, we can see some changes in place. And earlier today, Counselor Trosaw said hello to me in the hallway and asked how my morning was going. And I had just hung up the phone with a constituent reporting yet another N-12, a false N-12, and the problems that are being experienced now by the neighborhood in a home that used to be a single-family home that's become a converted multi-residential dwelling. And they're reporting no fire egress windows and all kinds of other issues with that property. So the timing of that call was really appropriate, given the motion that's before us today. There are a number of things different municipalities around the province are doing. Very few of them, including the one in Hamilton, have been tried and tested yet. Even the one that's being proposed in Hamilton has not yet come into force and effect. It's actually subject to what they do in their multi-year budget as well. And I guarantee you, Counselor Cuddy, there will be something else monumental we're doing this year. It'll be that multi-year budget that Budget Chief Pelosi has been working so diligently on for the last, well, three hundred and sixty-five days or so. So I just want to say, and I know that Counselor Cuddy thanked a number of people. I would echo those thanks. But I also want to take a moment to single out Counselor Trosaw and Counselor Ferrera. There was a lot of differences of opinion on what exactly should be in this motion. But we came together, we worked throughout the weekend. I know Counselor Cuddy referenced last week about me being able to call him at seven o'clock on a Saturday night to talk about things that were before committee, and this is exactly what he was referring to. I had to call and say, listen, Counselor Ferrera and I have been talking. How do you feel if we change this in the motion to get it a little bit better so that more folks can support it? That's the kind of work behind the scenes that often members of the public will never see. They don't know what's happened, they don't know how many hours have gone into it. But starting from very different perspectives on where we should get to on this, there was a lot of work, there was a lot of give and take, and a lot of saying, okay, we can all live with this as it is today, let's get moving on this because we don't want a delay to make it perfect. We want to get something moving today that is going to have hopefully some results this year. And once that's done, we can always go back and look at some other pieces later. But let's get the thing we all agree on moving. And so that's where we are today. So I do hope that this will be supported unanimously. And I want to, before I wrap up, just also acknowledge that folks in the industry, folks who are landlords, folks who are in the building and development industry, have approached me as well, and they have said, you know, we are also going to be working on this, but we are going to be focusing a lot of our advocacy efforts on the province to enact some of the changes that are proposed in Bill ninety-three, which really addresses some of the shortcomings in the landlord-tenant tribunal and the Residential Tenancies Act changes that need to be addressed. So I want to thank, I know Mr. Wallace is here from LDI today. He's one of, but not the only member of the other side of the equation, the landlord side, who have said, yeah, there's got to be some changes here. And we think that there's some things to do with the province, you acknowledged that in your letter. We're going to work on that. You guys work on this, and let's be all partners to make sure that we have a better tenancy protection regime in London and in Ontario than we do today. So hopefully we can support this unanimously and get working on the changes to our bylaw to come forward.
Well, exactly five minutes, so well timed. Counselor Trosaw, you're next.
Yes, thank you very much for acknowledging the work that Counselor Ferrera and I did on this. That cuts some of my time down considerably. I did want to thank, thank you again for doing that. I do want to acknowledge, as Counselor Cuddy already has done, no clapping, that we've got visitors in the audience who I think were very instrumental in bringing some of these problems that we face in our city and around the province, around the country, to our attention. And while I think that what we've done in terms of being able to come forward with a unanimous recommendation from our committee, which I hope will unanimously pass today, by no means should we let our guard down. We have to continue being diligent. As we progress, there will be additional N-12s. I think the fact that we've already said that we're looking at this carefully is going to have a good effect in terms of making people think twice before they abuse the system. And I do want to acknowledge the many, many landlords, some of which I've had the opportunity to speak with in the last week, who operate very legitimate outfits and do not engage in this type of activity. And I think the challenge in drafting legislation is finding the sweet spot where we're really disincentiving, disincentivizing bad behavior while not creating additional burdens for complying members of the industry. And I'm very optimistic that we can do that. Finally, I want to thank the city of Hamilton and certainly the Acorn activists and others in the city of Hamilton who have brought forward, and I know it still needs to be approved and it still needs to go through some hoops, but this has been getting national attention. It's been getting national attention in the press, and I think it's going to, again, already have a very beneficial effect. I am not going to make an amendment to forward on the Hamilton information to our staff because, in fact, our very diligent staff has already acknowledged that this is there. In fact, I received a note, I think other counselors have as well. So I'm very pleased that this is moving forward. I happen to think that the Hamilton bylaw does a really good job, sort of on the one hand, creating pretty close to comprehensive tenant protections that we're looking for, while at the same time, being very careful about not treading into exclusive provincial jurisdiction. And that's going to be, that's going to be the challenge here. So I'm looking forward to what happens with Hamilton. And thank you again for everybody, for everybody coming together to support this.
Thanks, Counselor. I have Counselor Hopkins next, followed by Counselor Ferrera.
Yes, if I may, I would like to make some comments to the Byron Springbank Monument. And first of all, through your worship to the Chair, I want to thank the committee for their unanimous support of this monument. I think there's lots of thanks going on, and I do really appreciate the deputy mayor's comments on the work and the years and years of work that has gone into this. And it's come from this working group that the deputy mayor sits on. So my thanks to the members of the working group led by Padre Frank Mance and, of course, the former Mayor Holder. But also, I think, given the amount of years and work, I want to thank city staff, too, Parks and Rec in particular, for their continuous work on this monument and seeing this through. When you think of all the hours that both the community and the city has spent, and to have it come forward, I know we still have an agreement to get signed, but, and lots of fundraising that the community will be doing. But to just, I've seen it in action. And I really, really want to thank everyone that has been involved in having this monument come to us today. Thank you.
Counselor Ferrera.
Thank you, your worship, and through you. I'm going to comment on the motion that was brought by you and Counselor Cuddy and Lewis with the work that, as the deputy mayor has described with other members of council. I do want to point out again, I'm not going to take too much time, but I thought this was just a great example for me, how we can come together and collaborate again. I just, I have to echo that, you know. You see all the spokes coming together to that hub, and we're all supporting the whole load together. I thought that was just a great example, and it's something that would facilitate, hopefully, our way into the budget time with more difficult talks that are going to be coming. But I do want to point that out. I also want to point out, thanks to everybody in the gallery who's actually been giving us good information. I really appreciate that. And for everybody in my ward who's contacted me with this matter and discussing this. This is, there is still a lot of work to be done, as the deputy mayor has said. But when that work is complete, we will, I personally, the people in my ward, a lot of people, will have more protections, and that is a great thing. That is a great thing from this council, so this is a very big step for me. I also need to point out, when I was at the Webster Street Apartments for the first assembly and the things that I saw, Counselor Cuddy, I could see in your face the anxiety. I could see how that affected you. And it was that moment when I knew that you were really on board here. So I really want to point you out, just point that out because I'm really grateful of how you're on board, and I really hope that we all do get that unanimous vote because that would definitely signal out to the city what our stance is, what our position is, and what we are trying to do. So I'll leave it for there.
Thank you. Any other speakers to this? I'll just say I was distracted there because in an odd series of events, Minister Flack was calling me during that debate. So I'll call him after the meeting, maybe it's money. Can always hope before the budget. So any other speakers on this? And this is the whole. other speakers on this? And this is the whole committee report. Okay, we'll open the entire committee report then for voting.
Closing the vote, motion carries fifteen to zero.
Thank you. That concludes the report. And if you ever felt it was a call offering money, I'm happy to call a brief recess.
It's not a bad idea, given where we are in the agenda. If, colleagues, we still have a number of reports to go. If people would like to take a break now, we could, or we could push through for a little longer. Okay, let's do another committee report, and then we'll check in at that point. So thank you councillor Ploza. We'll go to councillor Hopkins for the Civic Works Committee report.
Yes, your worship, I'd like to put the second report of the Civic Works Committee on the floor. I have not been contacted by anyone to have something pulled, so I will be putting the whole report on the floor.
Would anybody like anything pulled from the Civic Works Committee report dealt with separately, knowing that you can still comment if you like? Okay, looks like you can move the whole thing?
If I can make just a few comments about the meeting, your worship. And we received the first report from the Integrated Transportation Community Advisory Committee, we received that. We went out with a sole source award for our acoustic fibre optic monitoring contract to retain technologies for a four-year period. We appointed a new drainage supervisor. We had someone temporary, and Jessica Treela is now our drainage supervisor. We also had to change some bylaws, given the many changes that are going on with our municipal waste and resource material collections. And just want to also make a comment about the contract amendment that we supported for the recycling collection, garbage and yard waste. Obviously, we're doing many, many changes, some increases, this is the blue box. Hopefully, we'll be getting that through the producer responsibility process that will be going forward. We did receive the two reports from the Environmental Stewardship and Action Community Advisory Group. We received a delegation from the chair as well, Brandon Samuels, who spoke on yard and maintenance bylaw, which we have forwarded on to Civic Works. And with that, I know, I just want to make a further comment. We did have a discussion at committee around the introduction of last week's green bin and the changes in our garbage calendar. Many thanks to staff for the work that they continue to do implementing this program. And with that, that is my report.
Okay, thank you. Other comments on the Civic Works report? Councillor Trossow, go ahead.
Just to follow up on that last piece, I really want to acknowledge the outstanding work that the staff has done on the implementation of the green bin. And I know from reading the list in my ward, particularly my neighbourhood and Old North, that there were a couple of issues. And I'm just very busy referring people to Service London, because I think that that's just, rather than get hung up on the phones and maybe being frustrated, I think using Service London is just exactly what this type of issue calls for. There are a few, I would say relatively minor, issues that have happened. And all in all, from what I can tell, it's a successful rollout. And again, this has been many years in the coming. So congratulations to everyone involved, particularly Mr Jay Stanford, who's not here, but he certainly gets a lot of the credit. Because I know he will take individual calls from residents who have day-to-day issues. And he does so cheerfully, and he does so in a way that makes people feel that they're being listened to by the city. And I appreciate that so much. So again, thank you very much. And Civic Works can now go on to other things. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. That's all the speakers I have on this Civic Works report. So seeing no others, I'm going to open that for voting.
Closing the vote, motion carries fifteen to zero.
The next report is the third report of the Street Priorities and Policy Committee meeting. I'll turn it to Deputy Mayor Lewis to present that report.
Thank you, your worship. Unless anyone wants anything dealt with separately, I'm prepared to put the whole report on the floor.
Item separately from, oh, councillor Van Meerebergen, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, mayor. If we could pull number four, 2.1, the reallocation of the taking the money from the intersection at Oxford and Warrencliff. If we could vote, I'd like to vote on that separately, please.
Okay. Anything else separate for colleagues? Yes, councillor Hopkins?
Yeah, your worship, I just want to make sure I am referring to the third report of SPPC. Is that correct? That's on the floor. If you could pull number eight, 4.4, I did not support it at committee.
Okay. So four and eight so far. Anything else? Go ahead.
All right, I will put the committee report on the floor excluding four and eight. So that will be one, two, three, five, six, and seven.
Okay, that's on the floor. Any discussion on those items? Okay, seeing no discussion, we're going to open that for voting.
Closing the vote, motion carries fifteen to zero.
Deputy Mayor.
And I will put item four on the floor. This is the investing in Canada infrastructure stream that councillor Van Meerebergen referenced.
Okay, that's on the floor. Councillor Van Meerebergen, are you looking to speak to it, or just vote contrary? I'll let you put your hand on the list.
Thanks, mayor. I'm just going to vote again. I spoke to it at the committee meeting. Thanks.
Okay, appreciate it. Councillor Lehman, go ahead.
Thank you. While this intersection is not in my ward, it's in councillor Ferrer's ward and councillor Trossow's ward. Thousands of my constituents, as well as those in councillor Hopkins' ward and councillor Robinson's ward, go through this intersection daily. This is a definition of a bottleneck. Oxford Street runs fairly smoothly in the morning, coming eastbound, until you hit approximately Cherry Hill Mall, where it starts to back up from this intersection. And once it gets through there, it resumes a pretty good traffic flow. And in the evening, it starts backing up, sometimes going past Talbot all the way to Richmond and Oxford. And after that, runs fairly smoothly all the way through intersection at Wonderland, through Sanatorium, across the bridge, until you get to West 5. There's a similar roadblock, was at Richmond and Fanshawe. And after years, this is finally being addressed, much to the relief, I'm sure, of the people that go through that intersection on a daily basis. I know the price tag for Richmond and Fanshawe, and I think to do a proper job here at Oxford and Warrencliff, that's desperately needed, needs the funding that was originally allocated when the previous council passed the monies in this project five years ago. Five years we've been waiting to get relief at this intersection, and to hear now that because BRT is running over budget, they're going to be stealing relief at that intersection.
I don't think we're going to use the term stealing. Council reallocate funds all the time.
Sorry.
Thank you for rephrasing that.
Reallocating monies to cover BRT's shortfall, at the expense, in my opinion, of doing a proper job of relieving this bottleneck for the thousands of users, including transit, by the way. There's a lot of relief that's needed for transit to get through here. So I ask my colleagues to please reconsider this decision and allow the users that go through daily, the thousands, proper relief that they've been waiting for for quite a long time, quite frankly, to get this project back on track with the funding that was originally allocated. Thank you.
Other speakers to this? Councillor Trossow, go ahead.
I do want to thank councillor Lehman for asking me to reconsider my vote, because it's, you make a very persuasive argument. And at the committee, I explained why, even though I had grave concerns about this reallocation. I was still going to support the reallocation because I don't want to do anything that could jeopardize this other reallocatee, the entity to whom the reallocation is being made. And I also want to point out that, I'm not going to give the same long speech that I gave last time, because I think you just explained what a horrible intersection this is. And it's felt all the way up and down. And now that we're going to be looking at a lot of new development in the Oxford corridor, it's going to become even more acute, and I'll be raising this issue again. I do want to say I was pleased that traffic staff did indicate that they would be looking at some short-range mitigation measures in my request, and I take that in good faith. It's not part of the motion, but it was not made part of the motion because there was a reasonable representation from Mr McCrae. So I just want to make sure you don't think your plea is falling on deaf ears. I am going to vote very reluctantly, exceptionally reluctantly, as reluctantly as one can be. But I am going to, I know, I know, I know, but I'm so worried about what the unanticipated consequences would be of a no vote here. And I really do look forward to working with you in terms of dealing with that Oxford corridor, because it's something we share. I share it with councillor Ferrera, I share it with you. And it's something I'm very concerned about. So, that close.
Thank you councillor Trossow. Any other, I see councillor Ferrera.
Thank you, your worship, through you. I need to comment on this one, too. I did speak to why I would be voting for this, just for the reallocation of funds, just because of, with the Mobility Master Plan, I'd hate to see work get laid down, paid for, and then torn up possibly years down the road, a couple of years down the road. So I do see the councillor's reluctance to vote for this, and I do see councillor Lehman's words, what he's saying. And I think that the arguments do have merit. The reason that I am voting the way I am is simply because we do have the Mobility Master Plan still in development. It will be touching on that intersection, and I would hate to, like I said, have that work done and then have little tweaks here and there, and that would just result in loss of money. And also, just a little cherry on top, just for that reluctance, would be the relief of pressure on the tax rate increase for that business case. So that's why I'd be voting the way I am.
Go ahead, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, your worship. And I will say, I think councillor Lehman has made a compelling argument about his concerns here. This is, since you're chairing and I'm asking the question, this might be a little awkward to address a question through to you, but I'm going to ask if you might have any updates for us in terms of advocacy, or perhaps councillor Frank through FCM, if there's any advocacy occurring with the federal government in terms of updating their contributions to these transit streams. I remember when the previous council, in pre-COVID, approved the Wellington Gateway project. Obviously, there are lots of things that have happened in the intervening time. None of those things really within staff's control. They certainly did not foresee, just like the rest of the world, a global pandemic, supply chain issues, material cost escalations, shortage of skilled trades, labour cost escalations. None of that was predicted when this project was approved with the funding arrangement that the senior levels of government provided at the time. And now it feels like the senior levels of government are in some way washing their hands of any responsibility to help absorb these increased costs. So through your worship, I don't know if you can comment on whether or not any work is happening through OBCM, or if councillor Frank can provide anything with regard to FCM work on this. But I would be interested to hear if anything is going on, because we cannot be the only ones in this position, having received some of these infrastructure funds, and now finding they are far short of what is required to finish a project.
So I'll start, and I'll take some leeway, given I'm also chairing, to answer this question. So these are comments that I raised at committee on this item. Essentially, in the contribution agreements under this particular programme, as contribution agreements have been in the past, the responsibility is for the municipality to absorb cost overruns for most projects. But what is different, what many municipalities are seeing, is the scale and breadth of the increases in costs for major infrastructure projects that were agreed to under this programme and some others. I can tell you, it is a very active and live discussion with Ontario Big City Mayors. I know that AMO, too, is talking about this as yet another example of the general conversation that we're having, both at FCM, Ontario Big City Mayors, the National Big City Mayors Group, and AMO, on the challenges that municipalities are facing in this fiscal environment. It isn't just about addressing these projects as one-offs and the cost overruns, but it's about the fact that of all of the revenue streams that occur across the country, municipalities get about nine cents of every tax dollar, and yet we're responsible for an incredible amount of infrastructure in this country. And so, you know, the challenge could be restricted just to these projects, but this is an illumination of the inability of municipalities to absorb, without making major shifts in their capital plans, significant escalations of price appreciation. So yes, this is being dealt with. It may not be in a specific way that you've said it, but it is part of the larger conversation about the imbalance in the fiscal framework between levels of government that needs to be addressed, and a very active discussion. I will spoiler for council, and I always hate saying that I'm bringing a motion forward before I'm ready to do so, but I am in discussions with both councillor Frank and councillor Hopkins about bringing forward a more comprehensive motion to the February SPPC meeting in support of this and the advocacy that is happening, both on the overall fiscal framework piece, which is an active lobbying position, as well as an illumination about the challenges that we're facing on infrastructure projects with significant cost overruns through those partnerships agreements, which, yes, it is our responsibility. But I don't think anybody anticipated the municipality to take on such a large share of the infrastructure projects when they were approved in, when they were initially approved, before actually bringing them to construction fruition. And it feels like we almost don't have a choice, because if we were to then say, let's cancel these projects, which is often much-needed infrastructure, we would lose the, although maybe not as large as we would like, the federal and provincial contributions that are already in there. So the long answer to your question is, yes, it is an active lobbying position. I intend with my colleagues who do external lobbying and our government relations group, bringing forward a more comprehensive motion to a future meeting of council. But it will not solve our current problem that we'll continue to face both here and within the multi-year budget about how are we going to absorb significant cost pressures on the infrastructure side that I think every municipality is seeing coming out of COVID. I don't know if councillor Frank has anything to add or not.
Thank you. Yes, that was an excellent summary, but I did want to just specifically address. So at the FCM board in September, we actually did pass a resolution specifically about DMATF funding, so the Disaster Mitigation Adaptation Fund, which is a federal programme. And so the board approved at FCM to call on the federal government to work with municipalities to develop a funding mechanism to address inflationary cost escalations as it relates to that funding stream. We had a broader discussion at that point, too, about it not just being that one specific fund, but in fact, most of our capital programmes that receive federal and provincial funding. So again, this... So again, this joint initiative with the mayor and Counselor Hopkins. I'm hoping to elevate that and make it a little bit broader. We will be having a board meeting in February at FCM, and so I'm hoping the timing works out that I'll be able to bring that letter from London Council to the board meeting at FCM to see if we can make it a little bit broader. But this, of course, is part of our larger municipal growth framework discussion that FCM and municipalities across Canada are having, where, you know, municipalities are being called on to do the bulk of the infrastructure costs. And I shared this at the last meeting. But in November, we had a different discussion at FCM, but more specifically about how, right now, the municipality per unit is having to pay about $107,000, so $107,000 per unit in infrastructure costs. So that's looking at roads, sewers, community centers, all of those hard costs. And we know that we need to be getting more funding from our partners to be able to pay for all of that if we're expected to deliver on our housing commitments. So lots of work happening at FCM on this, and I'll, of course, be reporting back to committee on that.
You were asking a question, you've got some answers. So I'll start your timer again, and you can continue on.
Thank you. So I appreciate all the feedback on this. I think, in this case, I'm just going to share with colleagues that I think Counselor Lehman has persuaded me enough to cast my vote as a protest vote in this situation. This doesn't reflect on the work of staff. It reflects on the importance of getting our infrastructure projects moving and the lack of reinvestment from our senior levels of government in helping deliver on projects that were approved pre-current economic conditions where nobody could have envisioned this. It's not a reflection of the work of our staff. It's not a reflection of the importance of the Wellington Gateway. I think that's a critically vital project for the city. But I think that this intersection is likewise extremely important. And I'm quite aware, Counselor Trosaw and I have had a number of conversations about the intensification that's coming along Oxford in his ward around Cherry Hill Mall and the impact that that is going to have. So while I recognize that this is likely to pass, and probably, I will echo Counselor Trosaw, probably reluctantly should pass. But in this case, I am going to cast my vote in protest and say this is one where the federal government needs to come back and correct the deficit that it's, that the infrastructure project now has because the economic conditions have completely changed. And, you know, a project that was supposed to be almost a one-third, one-third, one-third cost share feels like now it's getting to be close to 50% municipal cost share by absorbing all of these extra costs. That is not in spirit what we agreed to when we approved these projects. So despite what may be in the contract agreements, I think it's not consistent with the spirit. So in this case, I'm going to cast my vote in protest.
Okay, I'm going to speak. I'll turn the chair over to you. So actually, no, you're presenting a report, so you get to still stand. Counselor Lehman, I'm going to have you chair, and then I'm putting myself on the speakers list on this item.
I'll go to the mayor.
Okay, so I want to say a couple of things in the debate of this item. First is a question through the presiding officer to staff. The item before us is permission to ask the MTO if we can move the allocation of this funding over. We still need their permission to do so. If they say we have permission to do so, do we have to? Or can we make a decision later to have the choice? In other words, given there are some concerns by colleagues, I'm trying to ask, can we proceed with seeking the permission, but essentially, when we maybe get a clearer picture of some discussions that are happening at other levels, clear picture of any opportunities to then, you know, choose the project we want to allocate them to? I know that's a bit of an on-the-spot question, but it's, I think it's relevant to the debate at this time.
I'll go to staff.
Thank you. Through the chair, the information we have received from the Ministry of Transportation is that they need requests submitted by the end of January, and that would then flow into an amendment to the agreement for the program. So certainly no guidance on a path like that. Based on the information we've received, I can't, certainly can't assure that that is a possibility. I have a feeling that their deadline is set based on TPA timing and their fiscal cycle.
Go to the mayor.
Okay, so I'm going to chalk that up to worth a try, but I'm not going to count on that as a possibility. So I'm going to say, with respect to my colleagues, I appreciate your frustration on this particular project. I mean, I actually drive that way every day. And so I understand what Counselor Lehman and Counselor Trosaw see in that intersection, both from a pedestrian safety standpoint as well as a general congestion standpoint, which is why it was a project that we actually submitted as a council. That being said, I do appreciate the work that our staff have done. They're trying to solve a number of problems for us all at once, given the substantive cost pressures we have on the infrastructure side of things. And although it might be tempting to cast a vote in protest, sometimes casting a vote in protest ends up actually changing the result of the vote. So if you actually want something to happen, I would suggest voting the way that you want it to happen and being very cautious about presuming something's going to pass and then voting a different way. This decision, which is not an easy one, and yet an example of a number we probably have to make about allocating limited resources in as a strategic way as we possibly can, will allow us to support what we know is a challenge for a project that we've already committed to and started construction on, and that's dealing with a funding deficit in the Wellington Gateway Project. It allows for us to potentially offset some cost pressures in an annual budget update because we can fund the tax-supported portion of that cost overrun, which is the smaller portion, the DCs will support most of it, and potentially avoid the debt servicing costs in issuing the debt on the tax-supported portion of that, which would fall out in subsequent years' multi-year budget update, should we seek the permissions on the timeframe. It probably wouldn't work into this one, but it would be an annual budget update. And it doesn't preclude us from actually doing something with this intersection, although we would obviously need a substantive source of financing to do so, and perhaps the permanent transit fund or other infrastructure projects that we fund out of the Master Mobility Plan is the source. But I see this as trying to deal with a very challenging situation on a number of infrastructure projects across the city by doing a strategic reallocation that tries to solve a few things. So for all of the frustration out there, I just want to emphasize, I think our staff have done an excellent job of trying to bring us a solution that tackles a number of challenges we face. Certainly not the challenges at that intersection, but I know that you're going to engage in other mitigating factors that you can try to do, knowing that a full infrastructure project is obviously always the best option for long-term sustainability. I will be supporting the committee's recommendation because I think it is the strategic move at this time to address the shortfalls in the Wellington Gateway Project, get the needed infrastructure in the ground there, provide an opportunity for us to avoid some debenturing in the annual budget update on that project, and doesn't preclude us from making improvements at the intersection in the future. I know it's not an easy decision. I know this is one where some people are going to like it, some people aren't. But this is the sort of challenge we have to face when we have limited resources and a number of critical infrastructure projects with that upward pressure that we talked about in my previous answer to the question. So again, our advocacy on this is important. But until we know what's going to change in the future, this is something that I think we have to proceed with and make the best of a difficult situation, knowing that it is not what we, any of us would consider ideal, given the previous approvals this council's made, the direction we've gone, and the challenges that we know exist at that particular intersection.
Return the chair to the mayor.
Any other speakers? Counselor Stevenson.
Thank you. I just wanted to quickly say this one has been a tough one. I reconsidered my vote shortly after the committee meeting and in talking with residents, and now listening to what we're seeing here, I am going to choose to vote no this time.
Okay. Other speakers?
Yep.
Counselor Van Meerebrink, go ahead.
Thank you, mayor. Yeah, I pulled this at SPPC and voted against the motion to reallocate funds to the BRT from this improvement at Warren Cliff and Oxford. I mean, that intersection, and I think we can all agree, is an absolute horror show. It should have been improved years ago. And then just to delay it further, I think is not, frankly, in the best interest of most Londoners. We have to continually remind ourselves that the vast majority of Londoners get around in vehicles. And it's up to us to make that ability as safe and as efficient as possible. And fixing that intersection, it certainly behooves us as a council to have that as a priority. So I wanted to make that comment, and I appreciate it. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you. Any other speakers have spoken yet? Counselor Ramon, go ahead.
Thank you, and through you. I just had a follow-up question to staff. I, too, am struggling with this. It's one of those things where I think, again, you know, we see that there's a need to shift based on the ability to do so, one, from this ability to now move funds, which I think is needed because we have to fund the other project. But at the same time, the implications that it means that this improvement would be delayed further. And I'm just wondering, from where we are with the Mobility Master Plan, are potential timelines for consideration? Does this enter into that? Is there still the opportunity of funding became available that we could move forward anyways with this? On a separate note, I just want to see what are our possible steps? Or is this all shifted into the Mobility Master Plan and then follows that process?
Mr. McCray.
Through the chair, the Mobility Master Plan will be identifying solutions in the upcoming year. And subject to the scope of those and council's direction, the project could unfold in several ways. Funding is obviously a key part of that, and that is a function of the scope. But the municipal source of funding for the project is being retained, so that provides flexibility. So whether that is a project solely funded through the development charges process, it provides a foundation for that approach, or it can also serve as a matching source of funds if the scope of the project makes it suitable for an external, like a federal infrastructure funding program.
Thank you. I appreciate that answer. I will say, as we're talking about being swayed by debate, I do think that the mayor swayed me a little bit more back into being a little more logical on this one. Again, because I'm worried that if we all shift in one direction, we may tilt the boat. So I'm, again, reluctantly supporting it. Thank you.
Okay, any other speaker? Go ahead, Counselor Frank.
Thank you, yes. I just wanted to say that I will be supporting the committee and the staff recommendation. I think it's a wise choice to be doing at this point. And I also think that I'd like to remind council that the reason that so many people drive is because it's the easiest way to go around the city. But if we actually invest in our transit system and make it more efficient, more people will be able to take the bus, and that is more convenient and vastly cheaper than owning a car. So I see this as another step in the right direction to getting people out of their cars and onto buses and alternatives that are more convenient for them. Thank you.
Counselor Trosaw, you already spoke to this item, so you don't need to speak again. I have Counselor Hopkins, though, next.
Yeah, thank you, your worship. And I just want to make a few comments. Given the way this debate may go, I did support it at committee, and I will continue to support it. And I think I heard loud and clear, staff, there are, they will be identifying solutions coming forward in the next year through the master plan process. So I think there's a lot of work that can happen, opportunities that can happen. I think for now, though, there is this opportunity that we can move some money over from one project to another. And I would encourage council to support the recommendation. And I do appreciate the comments coming from Counselor Lehman. I know, representing the West End of the city, we do have challenges how we move around. It is a continuous concern right along Oxford. And I am really looking forward to having further solutions, opportunities as we develop out in the West End to improve the mobility, the driving in particular on Oxford. So I am hoping committee will support the recommendation.
That's all the speakers I have. Okay, it's the committee's recommendation that's on the floor, so we'll open that for voting.
Closing the vote, motion carries, nine to six.
Okay, so the committee's recommendation passes. I'll go back to the deputy mayor.
Thank you, your worship. I will now put item number eight on the floor. Counselor Hopkins asked for this one to be pulled.
Okay, yes, Counselor Hopkins wanted to vote differently on this one. Any discussion on this matter? Yes? Go ahead, Counselor Trosaw.
Without reopening the entire debate, we had a very full debate, I think, at the committee. I'm going to, I'm going to retain my vote for the reasons I stated. I'm not going to repeat all of them. This has been a very harmonious meeting, and I really appreciate that. This is just one of those areas where we have a principal difference, and I will be voting no on this. Thank you.
Okay, any other speakers? Okay. Go ahead, Counselor Ramon.
Thank you, and through you. Yes, I, too, will be retaining my vote. I do think this is something where we need further discussion. To me, unfortunately, I didn't get to get clarification. But, you know, when I look at the issue and compensation, I always want to look and understand if salary includes all of the benefits pension associated in the salary calculation to better understand whether or not that is part of the entire percentage that we're looking at. I'm not sure if anyone's prepared to be able to answer that question, but I do know that that would be something, if we were discussing it at a committee, that would be something that I would be looking for more information, which is why I will continue to support my earlier position. Thank you.
Other speakers? Okay, seeing none, we'll open this for voting.
Closing the vote, motion carries, eleven to four.
Still good to continue on? Yeah? Sorry, go ahead, deputy mayor.
Yes, I was just going to advise, your worship, as I know that Chair Lehman was up the way, and I'm presenting the planning committee report as well, if it helps folks decide whether or not they're prepared to carry on. All items, despite some significant debate, were passed unanimously at committee. So if we're willing to continue on, I'm willing to put the entire second report on the floor.
Okay. I don't see anybody asking for a motion to. Go ahead, Counselor Stevenson.
I was hoping to pull eleven, five point two.
Okay. Anything else pulled separately? Okay. Go ahead. All right, then I will put items one through 10 of the second report of the Planning and Environment Committee on the floor. Any debate on those items? Go ahead, Counselor McAllister.
Thank you. Through the chair, I just wanted to offer some commentary. I did attend the planning committee. I'm not on that committee. But with item number six, 150 King Edward, I just wanted to thank everyone who came out and showed support for that. Their current congregation has outgrown their current establishment, which is also on King Edward, not too far away from where they're looking to relocate. The plaza in question that they're looking for, the zoning change, has been vacant for a long time. I've heard from many residents they'd like to see something in there. And I really do think that the, this congregation has made themselves part of the community. They're most welcome to that facility. And if they can make it work for what they want, I applaud them for that. And I welcome them. I applaud them for that, and I welcome them back to the neighborhood. So, thank you.
Okay, I don't have a... Oh, go ahead, Council Pelosi.
Thank you ever so briefly, as I was also a guest at this lovely planning meeting. And thank you to committees for taking the suggested amendment to item three point six being number eight. This is the old Costco-type area. And just an update, staff had just updated me that there was concerns raised through me that were the public's in regards to the stop signs all being erected, but the crossroads aren't built out yet, and some people stop, some people slow, some people perhaps speed up, that hopefully within a day or two, those signs will be begged for safety until the site sees more construction, starts to be built out. So thank you to committee and to staff for seeing this process.
Any other speakers? Okay, seeing none, we'll open those items from the committee's report, with the exception of eleven for voting.
Closing the vote, motion carries fifteen to zero.
And, your worship, I will now put item eleven, that's five point two, from the committee report, the green development standards, on the floor.
Okay, that's on the floor for consideration. Any speakers? Okay, seeing none, we'll open that for voting.
Marking Counsel Van Mirbergen absent. Closing the vote, motion carries thirteen to one.
Thank you, colleagues, and that concludes the second report of the Planning and Environment Committee. Okay, next we have added reports, which is the second report of council in closed session. Counsel Ramon has generously volunteered to read out our closed session report.
Thank you, and through you, your council in closed session report, item one, lease and contribution agreement, City and HL General Partner, Inc., telecommunications equipment 303 to 320 King Street, that on the recommendation, the deputy city manager finance supports with the concurrence of deputy city manager enterprise supports and with the concurrence of deputy city manager environment and infrastructure on the advice of the director of realty services with respect to the lease and contribution agreements for the lease of lands for the installation of a new City of London telecommunications equipment located at 303 to 320 King Street. The lease and contribution agreement between the city, the tenant, and HL General Partners, Inc., the landlord, for the lease in respect of the tenant's rights to construct, maintain, and operate a telecommunications infrastructure on a portion of the land, the building located at 30320 King Street, for a term of approximately 99 years, commencing on the earlier of the second anniversary of the issuance of the building permit for the building, or the first of the fourth month following completion of the building shell as determined by the professional engineering engineer engaged by the landlord for construction of the building and terminated on May 31st, 21, 23, the expiry date be approved, subject to renewal options. Two, partial property acquisition, 1453, 1455, and 1457, Oxford Street East, East London Link Project, that on the recommendation of the deputy city manager finance supports on the advice of the deputy director of realty services with respect to a partial acquisition of the properties located at 1453, 1455, 1457, Oxford Street East, further described as part 28, 29, and 31, parts of lots four and five, Plan 703 in the City of London, being part of the PIN or PIN number 08106-0015, PIN 08106-0016, and PIN 08106-0017, containing an area of approximately 87.69, 1373.08, and 1274.38 square feet, as shown on the location map, for the purpose of future road improvements to accommodate the East London Link Project. The following actions be taken: A, the offer submitted by Palmar Champagne, the vendor, to sell the subject properties to the city for the sum of $310,000 be accepted, subject to the terms and conditions as set out in the agreement; and the finance for this acquisition be approved, as set out in the source of finance report. Three, partial property acquisition, 1459 Oxford Street East, East London Link Project, that on the recommendation, the deputy city manager finance supports on the advice of the director of realty services with respect to a partial acquisition of the property located at 1459 Oxford Street East, further described as part 27, Lot 68, Plan 19, bracket C, in the City of London, being part of PIN 0816, 106, sorry, -0022, containing an area of approximately 1,199 square feet, as shown on the location map, for the purpose of future road improvements to accommodate the East London Link Project. The following actions be taken: A, the offer submitted by Red Maple Properties, Inc., the vendor, to sell the subject property to the city for the sum of $106,000 be accepted, subject to the terms and conditions as set out in the agreement; and B, the financing of this acquisition be approved, as set out in the source of financing report. Settlement, part, sorry, four, settlement agreement, 847 Highbury Ave North, East, London Link Project, that on the recommendation, the deputy city manager finance supports on the advice of the director of realty services with respect to the property located at 847, sorry, Highbury Ave North, further described as part Lot 9, concession one, in the City of London, being part of PIN 08290-0220, as shown on the location map, for the purpose of future road improvement improvements to accommodate the East London Link Project. The following actions be taken: A, the agreement as to compensation and possession from 847 Highbury, Inc., to settle the outstanding expropriation compensation to the property owner for the total sum of $250,000 be accepted, subject to the terms and conditions as set out in the agreement; and B, the financing for this acquisition be approved, as set out in the source of financing report. Five, partial property acquisition, 2154 Richmond Street, Sunningdale Road Improvement Project, that on the recommendation of the deputy city manager finance supports with the concurrence of the director of transportation and mobility and the division manager, transportation planning and design, on the advice of the director of realty services with respect to the partial acquisition of a portion of property from 2154 Richmond Street, further described as part of Lot 16, concession six, geographic township of London, in the City of London, County Middlesex, designated as part 2, 3, 4, and 5, reference plan 33R21696, being part of PIN 081450152, as shown on the location map, for the purpose of future road improvements to accommodate the Sunningdale Road Improvement Project. The following actions be taken: A, the agreement of purchase and sale submitted by Drew Low Holdings, the vendor, to sell the subject property to the city for the sum of $504,000 be accepted, subject to the terms and conditions set out in the agreement, including a temporary easement agreement for the term of one year for the sum of $50,000, with the option to extend the term up to two times, each for a period of one year, for an additional total sum of $50,000; and B, the financing of this acquisition be approved, as set out in the source of financing report. Six, property acquisition, 2835 Westminster Drive, Westminster Central Public School, London Police Services Operations, that on the recommendation, the deputy city manager finance supports along with the resolution of the London Police Service Board, and on the advice of the director of realty services with respect to the surplus school property owned by the Thames Valley District School Board, located at 2835 Westminster Drive, legally described as part Lot 15, concession five, as in 224251, subject to 124380224251, in the City of London, formerly the geographic township of Westminster, County Middlesex, being all of PIN 08203-0010LT, the property, as shown on the location map. The following actions be taken: The agreement of purchase and service submitted to the Thames Valley District School Board, the vendor, to sell the subject property to the city for the sum of $2,300,000 be accepted, subject to the terms and conditions set out in the agreement. The amended, amending agreement be accepted; and C, the financing of this acquisition be approved, as set out in the source of financing report. That progress was made with respect to item 4.7 and 4.8, as noted on the public agenda. And I know that you want me to move these separately.
Yeah, I will give you some instructions, but I have to go to Council Frank first.
Thank you, yes. And I declared a conflict of interest in closed session due to my partner working out one of the proponents in the items.
And that's number six. So what we'll do is we'll deal with items one and five first, items two, three, and four second. Those are the transit-related items that I believe Counsel Van Mirbergen would like to vote alternately on. And then item six, which Counsel Frank has declared a conflict on. So Counsel Ramon, perhaps you could put, I think, one and five first, then two, three, four, and then six.
Thank you. I'll look to put one and five on the floor.
Okay, moved by Counsel Ramon. Any discussion on those? Okay, seeing none, we'll open those two for voting.
Indicated as yes. Thank you. Closing the vote, motion carries fifteen to zero.
Counsel Ramon.
Thank you. I'll look to put two, three, and four on the floor, please.
Okay, these are the items related to transit infrastructure projects on both the Wellington Gateway and East London Link. Any discussion on these? No? Okay, we'll open that for voting.
Counsel Trosso indicates yes. Closing the vote, motion carries thirteen to two.
Go ahead.
Thank you. I'll look to put item six, the property acquisition, at 2835 Westminster Drive, on the floor.
Great. Any discussion on this one? Okay, let's open that for voting.
Closing the vote, motion carries fourteen to zero with one recuse.
Thank you. That concludes the in-camera report.
Thank you very much. Greatly appreciated. There are no other added reports. There are no deferred madums. Any inquiries? Seeing none? There's no emergent motions, so we're on to bylaws. There's all the bylaws before you, plus a couple of added bills based on the in-camera. I think what we'll do is we'll do all of the bylaws associated with everything except the transit ones that we separated out and the school board one that the conflict was declared on. So we'll do everything else first, which means bills nineteen through thirty-eight, and added bill thirty-nine, forty-three, excluding bill thirty-one. So that's essentially everything except the transit-related items and the school board items. Is everybody okay with that division? Okay, all right. So I'll need a mover for first reading of that. Counsel Cuddy, seconded by Counsel McAllister. We will open first reading for voting.
Closing the vote, motion carries fifteen to zero.
Okay, mover for second reading of that. Counsel Hopkins, seconded by Counsel Ferreira. Any discussion on second reading? Seeing none, we'll open that for voting. Third reading of those items. Mover, Counsel Lehman, seconded by Counsel Hopkins. We'll open third reading for voting.
Closing the vote, motion carries fifteen to zero.
Okay, next we'll do the transit-related items, which is bills thirty-one, added bill number forty, added bill number forty-two, forty-two. So bill number thirty-one and added bills forty to forty-two, correct? Okay. Is everybody okay with that? Yours is not coming yet. Okay, mover for those, then. Counsel Cuddy, seconded by Counsel McAllister. We'll open first reading of those bills for voting.
Closing the vote, motion carries twelve to three.
Okay, second mover and a se- a second or for second reading of those bills. Counsel Ferreira, seconded by Counsel Lehman. Any discussion on second reading? Okay, seeing none, we'll open those for voting.
Closing the vote, motion carries twelve to three.
Third reading for these matters. Moved by Counsel Cuddy, seconded by Counsel Hopkins. We'll open third reading for voting.
Closing the vote, motion carries twelve to three.
Okay, and now on to the school board-related item. That's bill number forty-four. I'll look for a mover of that item. Counsel Cuddy, seconded by Counsel Ferreira. We'll open first reading for voting. Second reading. Mover and seconder. Moved by Counsel Stevenson, seconded by Counsel McAllister. Any discussion on second reading? Seeing none, we'll open that for voting.
Closing the vote, motion carries fourteen to zero with one recuse.
Okay, third and final reading of bill forty-four. Moved by Counsel Lehman, seconded by Counsel McAllister. We'll open third reading for voting.
Closing the vote, motion carries fourteen to zero with one recuse.
Okay, that brings us to the end of our scheduled agenda. I will look for a motion to adjourn. Moved by Counsel McAllister, seconded by Counsel Cuddy. We just by hand, all those in favor of adjournment?
That motion carries.
Okay, thanks. We're adjourned.